All right, there's one item that we should just quickly at the beginning of our meeting. We are in the front courthouse and there's a picture on the front door of our mask. If you should need a mask, there are additional ones available in fact to the courthouse. And we appreciate everyone's cooperation with this. That fixes either B1 on the agenda, the adoption of the agenda. I did have one change. I have a lucky strike when we close meeting's agenda items. The second one, L2, so it's not necessary at today's meeting. And just for housekeeping, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda with that small change. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Thank you all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That takes us to the next item on the agenda, item C1, Superintendent's Report with Dr. Rosen.
How about me? There we go. Greetings from your RCPS family. As always, we'd like to first thank you so much for your support and advocacy for our school district as we have navigated the churning, untarded waters of school reopening during the pandemic. We have been in school for students now for a full six weeks and it feels like things are finally starting to come together. Teachers and staff continue to be nothing short of miracle workers in their willingness and ability to adapt to this new landscape and make a valiant effort to reach every child every day, whether learning in person or remotely. This pace, though daunting and tedious, continues to be the mode of operations for now. There is a lot going on in special session of the General Assembly that may affect RCPS, especially in terms of budget. We are very pleased to see that both committees saw fit to ensure schools were held harmless due to the projected sales tax revenue loss that had originally been anticipated, which would have had an approximate $153,000 impact on the RCPS FY '21 school budget. Also, there is active advocacy by educational groups to hold schools harmless for ADM loss during this time. School divisions in Virginia are projected to lose about $155 million in state funding due to ADM loss. However, I'm pleased to report that Rappahannock is not one of the school districts experiencing this trend. This trend in the state shows that schools that have reopened, even on modified schedule, lost far fewer students than in areas that began remotely. In fact, this would be the first time in six years that we report a stable ADM during budget time. We were also told last week that schools can't expect another infusion of CARES dollars specific to schools. We hope to find out during the state call tomorrow about the formula being used to distribute the additional $200 million to local school districts, as well as what parameters for reimbursement the state will require. We just found out Friday that we did receive some year's funding, not very close to what we had applied for originally, but still about $30,000 or so more than we would have had. So with all of these, we'll need to adjust some of that supplemental appropriation in the letter at the next meeting, so we'll shore all that up for that. We were truly honored to host the United States Department of Education Assistant Secretary Frank Broken, along with other officials from U.S. Ed. and the Virginia Department of Education, local elected officials, and media to discuss the successes and challenges of reopening schools. The time was very beneficial, not only to talk about reopening during the pandemic, but also to showcase the amazing programs going on despite the pandemic, like Trades Education, the Health Science and Agricultural Academies, the use of Commit to Be Fit and its dedicated spaces like the Narrowsium to support student learning, the Action-Based Learning Lab, the Sensory Hallway, and school food programs. It was also a great chance for us to speak candidly about challenges, limited resources, the local composite index, and other funding issues, Head Start, CARES collaboration, and many other topics specific to Rappahannock. I think between Chair Smith and I, I think this is what I think we could think of. Although we were thrilled with having been selected as a successfully reopened school in Virginia, we also wanted to share the difficulties that schools face, as well as advocate for additional assistance as we move forward. Thank you to all who were able to make an appearance and tour the schools. I hope you were pleased with what you witnessed. The school board will be discussing the possibility of transitioning to four-day in-person instruction, as was the goal in our reopening plan at its regularly scheduled meeting on October 13th. Now, with the newly released pandemic dashboard, we have improved local health metrics from VDH and the CDC, with which we can make much more clearly capture the transmission risk in our area, as well as set measurable benchmarks for the ability to phase in additional students. Additionally, today, RCPS sent out surveys to parents and guardians, as well as all staff, to better understand the collective perception and comfort levels of our key stakeholders before moving forward. And finally, a huge thank you for allocating CARES funding for our wonderful Wednesday program, which began promptly after two weeks of receiving that approval. I cannot emphasize enough the efforts of Jenny Kasa with getting this program off the ground so quickly, as well as the efforts of the RKC to support children and families during this time. Through this community collaborative, over 100 RCPS students are being served, enthusiastically participating in outdoor cooking classes, yoga, art with plants and flowers, line dancing, hiking, and community service projects. This structured remote learning day program has been hugely beneficial for nurturing and cultivating safe social interaction, while providing an outlet for creative expression and outdoor physical activity. In fact, Jenny is here to present a little gift from the wonderful Wednesday campers that they wanted to send your way to say thank you. And as always, thank you for all you do to continue to support RCPS. We are so grateful for your collaboration and advocacy during this challenging time. Is Jenny here?
Hi. She's on the show, isn't she? Hi. Oh my goodness. All right, well, at the end of each day of camp, we have a time for community service project, or we have an acknowledgement of activity. So you were our first activity to say thank you, because of course this whole program would not have been possible without your support. So we really, we all thank you. I mean, it's benefited not just the campers, but the counselors and the staff and the people that come up to me to workshops and the people that make the lunches and the buses and the forage center. I mean, it's just, it's benefited so many people. So I don't know what to go to. Okay, so you all have to know that the camps are all divided, right? We have six different spaces that they have to go to. They're divided into clusters. There's two groups in each cluster. So we have three different age groups and these cards that get together. Oh my goodness. There's more than eight. I'm not sure. So we have like, the older kids are on top, and then there's a little baby somewhere down. Wow. We have like three clusters of five people. Thank you. I just want to thank you all. You are the people. Who's gonna hang it up?
Can you raise it?
We need a little money to lock out.
That's awesome. That's really cool.
This is the worst thing. If you're wrong, if you haven't seen a deal. Is there a really good sign? Oh, like a pink. Here we go. I know this is. Okay, this is like a hammer. What is it on the bottom? Sure. Okay. You got her? We don't. I'm pronouncing. I'm just gonna put it up there. Pretty hard. I truly thank you so much from all of us. They've been sending you.
Put that in a file.
Thank you so much, Tim.
You're awesome. Absolutely, you're awesome.
Oh, I have to say the same about you. Do you have any questions? Did you want to?
I just want to say I wonder what it is. I was concerned about the ability to get children into the Wednesday program. So it's great to hear that you all have gotten hungry campers.
Yes.
Really putting that money to good work. Good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is the public comment period. If everybody that would like to comment, please raise their hands. And when you're identified, please approach the microphone, state your name and the district that you're from, and direct your comments to the board. If you do keep your comments till about five minutes, we should be all set. I think Ms. Ramon will turn her hand up first.
Okay, go.
Oh. Is there a question?
No.
No rush. Well, on a more serious note, I'm Maureen Harris and I live in the Piedmont District. I'm a member of the Library Board of Trustees and I'm joined today by three other members of the Library Board of Trustees.
Three.
Three, thank you. Four. Randy Shugate from Hampton. Teresa Sidro from Jackson. Judy Disarino from. So I'm here today to revisit the subject of paid parental leave that I spoke to you about at your meeting in early August. But first, I want to thank Christine Smith for coming to the Library Board meeting on August 27th to hear how we conduct our business. We are certainly honored to have her there, and I thank you very much, Christine. So at that August 27th meeting of the Library Board, we passed a resolution requesting that the Board of Supervisors adopt the paid parental leave policy that Governor Northam enacted for all state employees two years ago. I've provided you with a copy of his executive order, which grants eight weeks of salary, as of the birth of a baby or adoption of a child. I would also note that President Trump signed an executive order last December granting paid parental leave to all federal employees, and this was to go into effect on October 1st. So the Library Board resolution was that the Board of Supervisors adopt this policy for all county employees and for library, the three library employees, who strictly speaking are employees of the library, not the county. And this, as you may know, our new library director, who I'm doing weekly, whom we're so delighted to have her as our director, will be expecting her first baby on her due date is October 16th. Our resolution passed by a vote of seven to two. One of the nay votes was by a person who felt that it would be too expensive for the county. But for a young woman who is making, say, $25,000 a year, eight weeks of salary amounts to only about $4,000. Do you really want to take $4,000 away from this young family and put it back in the general fund? $4,000 is only 0.02% of the general fund. It's a pittance, but it is not a pittance to a young couple who just had a baby. The other nay vote was a Library Board member who has never been pregnant, has never delivered a baby, who has never nursed a baby. Now, Governor Northam is in the same situation. He has also never been pregnant. But Governor Northam is a pediatrician by training. He understands how highly important it is for a new mother to spend time with her baby after delivery. Important not only for the health of the baby, but also for the health of the mother. In addition, this parental leave policy, we believe, would let young couples know that they are welcome in Rappahannock County. And as you know, we have a dearth of young people living in our county. So the Library Board is asking you to adopt this policy. We're asking you to adopt it today. We're asking you to do the right thing. Make Rappahannock County a shining star in the state of Virginia. Teresa Sidro would like to speak with you also.
Teresa Sidro from the Jackson District, also on the Library Board, also speaking only for myself. We have now been talking about this paid parental leave issue for months. And we've gotten all the financial information because I'm in some other people's country three months ago. And just to clarify, if you adopt this policy, you will not be writing a check for $4,000 or anything else. You've already allotted this money and there won't be any additional cost. Okay? It's now October. We've been talking about it for months. The baby's coming. Baby's coming. We run out of time. Baby is coming. We have a 10-year employee. So there's no time left, and I am hoping that you guys will vote today. Whichever way you vote, I'd like to know where you stand on this. Tell us. Just hand up and vote and tell us which way it is. Now, I understand that there is a process of developing county-wide personnel plans. Now, having run an organization myself, I know what a paid job that is, and it is going to take a long time. It could easily be a year, a year and a half before you get a chance to build on this. But when you do, if you don't like the policy that you adopted today, you can change it. Easy, simple, change it. But do something today. Show us where you stand, please. So in closing, I just want to say again, it's October. Baby's coming. Now's the time. Let's vote this way.
Thank you.
Do you need to? No, go. This is the end.
I am Judy Disarino from the Hampton District. I have spent, and I am speaking for myself, but I'm also on the Board of Trustees. I have spent most of my career on making certain that babies are healthy right from the start. And we've had a lot of talk about healthcare and metrics and what's happening. And what the research really shows is those first six to eight weeks are often the most important in a baby's life, in terms of bonding with the parents, in terms of actually helping develop their personality, of feeling loved and feeling, and that it's very hard to recapture in a later time. So I am urging you to make the house decision for our future citizens of Rappahannock County and vote for this policy. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Do you?
Perfect segue. I'm Julia Ramos, Hampton District. Yesterday's Washington Post, "The Future of Work" in the Business section of the Post. For new parents, 119 nations offer at least 12 weeks of paid leave. Nine offer more than a year. In some countries, parental leave isn't limited to the parents of newborns. In Sweden, parents can take 16 months of paid leave anytime till their child turns eight. As a parent in the United States, you're promised none of that. As the only industrialized country that mandates no paid maternity or paternity leave when a child is born, the United States leaves, parents defend for themselves. While many companies choose to provide their employees with paid leave, corporate policies tend to be far more limited than what's on offer in other countries, often entirely leaving out workers of lower-paid jobs. Of course, this also applies to local and state governments. I was a library employee for Fairfax County for 27 years. In those 27 years with various employees that I worked with, we had staff in where I worked of three full-time and one part-time person. We had 13 pregnancies. One of our gentlemen had nine kids. He didn't take a lot of time off, but the women did. And so I'm very familiar with having to work extra because of covering, because of people being on long-term leave. I understand the importance of that kind of leave, and I want to urge you all to think hard about parental leave. But I also want to add to that the term family leave. I was the only child with a handicapped parent. And when my father died, I had to take care of my mother for the last nine years of her life. And I didn't get any kind of breaks for that from Fairfax County other than unpaid leave, which I did have to take in the end. But I want to add to parental leave that some of us deal with elderly parents or handicapped children over long periods of time, and having some sort of form of reasonable leave that people can take, I would say, without feeling guilty, without having to go beg for it. And the first time I needed to take leave, I really had to go beg for it. And after that, they made it easier. And I spent a lot of time working around my work days because I was lucky from that point of view that I worked evenings and Saturdays and had days off during the week where I could go take my mother to the doctors, et cetera, et cetera. But I can tell you that not everybody has that kind of luxury. I know that we're a small county. I know that things are always tight, but I think we need to start thinking ahead. And this situation that the county is in right now is a perfect example that we need to think ahead. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos. Does anyone else have any questions who wish to speak? Yes, Ms. Chair.
Comprehensive planning was in its infancy in Rappahannock County about 50 years ago. And ever since the concept was adopted here in the county, we have fulfilled our requirements subsequently to review the plan every five years. It has been done. We are certainly in compliance with all of the requirements. However, may I suggest that the comprehensive plan is a living document. It has been reviewed now very successfully since the conduct of the chair. And we have now revised our plan, I think, to a great extent. Any loose ends, and I suggest that the maps that have been quite controversial would be a loose end, can be taken care of later, should it interfere with your acceptance of it. I would suggest and request that you collectively, unanimously, approve the comprehensive plan at the hearing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos. The board members need to pull out the contingency budget. Consider it as a whole.
Madam Chair, I'd like to pull out the minutes, medium minutes for consideration and also accounts payable.
All right.
I don't know, but that'd be exciting.
I believe that only leaves for the contingency budget process. No actual required there. And then recognition for Kevin Williams. That's okay. So let's have a piecemeal for the minutes for adoption. If you'd like to make a motion and incorporate your changes.
Yeah, I'd like to point out the minutes, and this is no criticism of Mr. Curry. I know he's really busy, but we only received these latest minutes yesterday. And I do like to review them in great detail. Didn't have a chance to do that, so I just wonder if we'd set them aside maybe for a November meeting.
I think we can do that. I'd like to make a motion that we table them until the November meeting, just for housekeeping, if that's okay.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That takes us to the accounts payable process.
Just a couple of questions, and maybe Mr. Curry can quickly recall these expense items. One is a resillveterinary clinic. It's not a large amount. I just wasn't sure what that involved.
Will I vote?
Thanks. I think I figured it out how I'm thinking about it. Well. I don't want to guess anything. Is it approved by the sheriff about animal control? Okay. All right. And then the second one, sheedie? That's an insurance repair of new vehicle that was hit by a tree. Okay.
My only comment on the accounts payable was regarding a card number service fee, which is not readily seen on the synopsis we received to approve. But we did incur a late fee on one of the credit card statements. And that it distressed me that we don't have a process in place where we're not incurring a late fee.
Well, we generally do have a process in place when the board's authorized us to be paid during the regular cycle or the mid-month cycle. And we struggle to get that message through to one user in particular, and that fee was incurred.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that there wasn't a process issue at all. Housekeeping, yeah, things were being paid in a kind of fashion. Thank you, Mr. Curry. A directed motion for the approval of the accounts payable.
So.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson, and a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Sanz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That takes us to the recognition of service by Kevin S. Williams.
Final order, I think y'all were supposed to read.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm so sorry. We were supposed to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Whitson. Thank you.
As much as there is no discussion on it yet, and we still have appropriate timing to do that.
All right. You don't step off. Declaration to be read from the minutes of the Board Supervisory meeting during the legal phase of the Bryant-Wonny case discussed. Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3115H, as a Board of Members, a Board Supervisor member, I might have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Bryant-Wonny case. The nature of my potential personal interest is in the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as an individual, well, just as a member of the Board Supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a member of three or more members of the Board Supervisors and that are affected by this transaction, and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3115H, as a Board Supervisor member, I might have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of the payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Bryant-Wonny case. The nature of my potential personal interest is in the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as an individual and as a member of the Board Supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more members of the Board Supervisors that are affected by the transaction and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3115H, as a Board Supervisor member, I might have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Bryant-Wonny case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that I certify that I am a group of three or more members of the Board Supervisors that are affected by the transaction and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
10 months in, I'd hope to memorize this, but I'm still trying. Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3115H, as a Board Supervisor's member, I might have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones. that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Bradon case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as a member of the board supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more members of the board supervisors who are affected by the transaction, and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
I had a primary meeting.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing that to my attention, Mr. President. That takes us to the next agenda item, the recognition of service by Kevin S. Williams. Mr. Williams isn't here today, so I will reach out to him. And I think it would be appropriate to wait to adopt this until he's here to accept it. Should he not be here next month, I will go ahead and do it, and then make sure that you see something.
Do you want to authorize me to sign the letter and then present it?
Whatever time. I mean, I could be, I'd be happy to make the motion that we go ahead and adopt this recognition of service today.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Nantale. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That takes us to the next agenda item. F1 was the presentation of that letter. Do we need to revise the agenda to strike that or just move along?
I can read just.
Very good, thank you. That takes us to the VDOT quarterly update with Mr. Nesbit. Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome. Thank you, it's a pleasure to be here. Appreciate you offering to have me here today. It's been a while since I've been here. I think it's February or something like that. But let's see, I think you should have a copy of the monthly report in hand, and I was just hitting on two or three of the key items. One thing, South Cove Road is a road that was approved by this board for real rustic construction as part of the secondary security plan. It is currently anticipated to, we've been removing trees. We're going to start grading and doing drainage work here in the next couple of weeks, and then we'll be ready to hard surface that road in the spring. So we will be working over that road, on that road over the next couple of months. And then we will hard surface it in the spring, and that will lead us to Kaiser Run Road. It'll be our next road after that. It'll be a couple of years. We have, there's a bridge that we've been working on for a couple of months now on Paul's Bluff Road, and it ran over a little bit. It's supposed to have been completed back in, back in, back in September, but it is going to be complete, uh, closed by the set-up. So it should be open here by, I guess that's immunity. So they had some substructure foundation issues that they weren't prepared for, but this is just a couple of weeks of play. But it should be open by the end of this week. And then there's another bridge, over the same creek or river, is Kaiser Run Road that they'll start in October or later this month, early August. They may be, they may be working on that. It's probably about two months, right?
So will that one, a detour?
It's supposed to be, it will be closed, a detour in place.
Okay, so it must be before Paul's Bluff and then the Centipede.
Yes. So again, as a declaration, this is minor substructure work. I also want to bring to your attention, we recently were, we received a FOIA request from a motorist to cut a speeding ticket on Route 522 in Woodville. And come to find out, the current speed limit in Woodville, 35 miles per hour, was established approximately 20 years ago. As a temporary pilot test to see how speed adjusted to it, it never was formally finalized as the speed limit, and has been pretty much a temporary speed limit for 20 years. So we're in the process of reviewing that. We hope that we can maintain the speed limit at 35. We're in the process of reviewing that and certainly report back to the board with any, when we get that information. Certainly we'll go with Mr. Curry and the sheriff and the board before we make any changes there. If, we may.
So Mark, are you saying that currently the speed limit is still 55 going through?
No, 35.
It is officially 35?
It is 35, posted 35. Someone got a speeding ticket there and protested and filed a FOIA. We looked through search records, found out that it was never finalized. It was a 35, it was stated 35 as a temporary measure, and it was never.
So that means you couldn't get him a speeding ticket for going over 35?
Well, that's up to the judge.
Right, right.
Hasn't happened. I'm not sure of the outcome of that particular citation, but we did, we're just reacting to a FOIA.
It's a very long temporary.
It is, it is.
Interesting, all right.
That's why we're taking, we'll take our time and get some legal advice on our end before we make any changes. And also, I'll skip Sperryville thing. We had the intersection there, 231-522, has been on our list for a couple, three years to use our safety and operational funds to improve that intersection. Basically, we can strike it back to a standard T, and we should have the funds available to do that this coming summer. So we plan to make that change this summer, barring any unforeseen circumstances. And then we have a, an item here that VDOT, myself and our district traffic engineers spent some time with Chairman Smith, Chairman Person Smith, in Sperryville, about a month ago.
Yes, sir. A little month ago.
Some of the, she pointed out several items that were our consideration. Want to go through them? Do you want to go through them?
Well, I'm happy to go through them. It's sort of blending the next agenda argument there, but I think it's fine if no one objects, but we talk about it at length now. I mean, I think that things that are replaying in the village, we've been talking about for several months, in further discussions with other people, different things have come to light too, that I also discussed with Mr. Nesbit. Obviously, the pandemic has decreased certain kinds of traffic flow. Arguably, with some tourism, it's increased other kinds of traffic flow with the post office that serves the town of Washington being closed. We have an increase of that traffic every day. And then the other thing that was a large concern in talking to a lot of residents in Sperryville is the repeated egregious instances of drivers illegally passing school buses in the area. And so that was another thing I brought in my discussion with Mr. Nesbit. The things that we discussed on the walking towards actionable items, and I made an attachment to the agenda today, so you can review these. There's a whole lot of official items that the board needs to take action on. Is the Rattahannock County Public School System is to study and erect signs at these school bus stop locations near the village on 522 and 211. I had already reached out to Dr. Crimson, the garden. I believe this was an acceptable item that we can work together on. There are some right locations for children at play signs in the village along Main Street, which is a function of county administration, and we can undertake that as well. In touring the village, the stop sign on Route 600 and Main Street was obstructed by vegetation. I contacted the landowner, and when I went by the other day, VDOT had actually already removed the shrub root. So the stop sign is clear, the vegetation's been removed. In that same area, there was a VDOT sign down that the engineer was going to work to put back up as well. The one item that needs board action or concurrence is the edge lines on Main Street and East Lane and Sidewalk. VDOT is willing to pursue using our CSOI funds to re-mark with eight-inch thermo paint. There have been an original application of thin paint along the side of the road. And then, I guess about two years ago, you all came back and painted again another thin line.
Yes.
But both of those applications are not wearing well. But there's a better application, a thermal application, that we could come back and revisit that would more widely mark the edges of the lanes and make it clearer for drivers than it is now. And that's, I think, was there a ballpark figure you'd attach to that, Mark? I don't mean to put you on the spot.
I think it was around $5,000.
Okay.
Something like that, yeah.
So I mean, I think that's a really important thing. You know, we've been working to get it done, and this would be a definite way to get it accomplished and corrected compared to what's in place now. VDOT is looking into signs on Main Street in both directions on 211 and on 522, like those in Woodville that say radar enforced. There's a crosswalk at Route 522 and Main Street, and the engineer toward the village with us is looking at adding a pedestrian walking sign to the poles in that location. That is a very tight location to add any more markers to the signpost. And if I misspeak, and I'll please correct it, Mr. Nesbit. But in addition to correcting the situation by adding a higher pedestrian crosswalk sign, there would be some repair needed also on the 911 sign for the Calmy at that intersection, as it's clearly been hit and it's leaning away from the intersection, so it's also not easy to read. The other thing that came up at the last board supervisor's meeting was the addition of some sort of sign marking bicycle traffic on the approach to the park on 211.
That could be a share, I mean, a share of the road sign for building Sperryville too. If you can, I'll strike that one, I guess, and more the better.
You know, something very simple on those lines would be completely appropriate.
If someone could send me one question for that.
Okay, all right. I'll make that next, Mark. I'd added it to the 4.3 this fall. There were several other issues that we reviewed in our tour of the village, in particular, some drainage issues in the area of the post offices, but those were all found to not be in the right way, and the landowners have been, I reached out to them just to let them know that I had looked into it, and it's just something that's not a VDOT project. So those are what we had seen in reviewing the challenges in the village at this point. And my closing comments are, in such a time as the pandemic has subsided, the new post offices in place, and all routines, excuse me, routines have resumed. Additional studies may be undertaken at that time. We're doing so much going on, especially in the city of the post office at this time. I think it would be adding fuel to the fire to look at doing some additional construction projects through that area. So I guess the main thing, I would ask the board members if they have any questions on these observations, and I'd like to get concurrence on the action to re-mark the eight-inch lines with thermal paint today, if I could. If anybody has any questions? All right, well, then I will make a motion that we ask VDOT to re-mark the edge line on Main Street and East Lane and Sidewalk. As VDOT will use our CSOI funds to re-mark the eight-inch thermal lines. And that's my motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Nesbit. I do want to thank you. Things have really been hopping in Piedmont District, in addition to the walking towards Sperryville. I know you've also fielded numerous emails regarding the bridge that needs attention on Moon Road, and directed us to the right people to discuss that, which is very much appreciated, and of course, also in Piedmont District. And then you've had projects going on at Paul's Bluff Bridge, the upcoming work at Kaiser Run, and then I know you all have been very busy on Action Road as well. Thank you for all you've been doing.
So can I say one?
Yes, Mr. Perry, absolutely.
I know that when you all repave the 211, the four-lane highway, you generally wait till there's some accidents or whatever before you decide to have a wider strip on the side there. But I would ask if you all consider that, this doesn't matter, of course, because it's, you know, for three reasons. You know, one, pushing snow, you can go out further. Two is maintain control of cars when they go over off the pavement. And three is for bicycles. Would be safer for bicycles on 211.
Yes, sir. I know we typically, our primary route paving program is managed by our district section, and they do apply some funds each year to paving shelters. They're only allowed to use some, you know, just a small percentage of their paving allocation for shelters. And so it's kind of prioritized. I'm not, I don't have knowledge right now of their priorities district-wide, but certainly see when that might be for the next time they pave the section of 211, make releases considered.
That'd be great. I noticed during the pandemic, there's a lot of more bicycles out here coming up to build the next, and connect the roads.
To pave the shelters, wouldn't it need a basin? Like Mr. Perry said, and it makes sense if the vehicles are going to come over on the edge, wouldn't that edge have to have the same base under it as the road bit?
Yeah, but it has to be, it would have to be cut out in full depth asphalt put in. It's just not a matter of paving what's there, it's got to be cut out by eight inches and asphalt put back and then hold, the whole depth.
Yeah. I think there's, there's several instances where the road should be a little bit wider just for that reason alone. Bicycles could use it as well, but there's a lot of crazy people out there.
And without performing also.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
It's been great to have the publishing science in the village too, really help get people's attention as they enter. Thank you for cooning us, and then also for the forest as well. Anyone else have any VDOT-related questions?
Thank you.
No, just thank you for replying to emails quickly.
Um, Mark, I just had, it's funny, all constituent roads seem to be leading the VDOT, no pun intended. I have a long list of, mostly small requests for you, and I'll get that to you just by email, so not to burden you here, but just the highlights. Mount Marshall Road, we talked about that, and thanks for your response. Any idea on timing of when you're going to get out to Mount Marshall Road to redo that apron that's rack 625 off of?
Well, Super Ted said he would try to get to it, you know, sometime in the fall, so I'll double check after we're able to see.
Yeah, that'd be great. There's some culvert issues too, so if we can time it, I'd love to be out there just to see that everything's taken care of at once. And then Long Mountain Road from Rock Mills up to Ridgeview, apparently rudded and potholed again. I know that's an ongoing one. And I believe that your team was out there and recreated it, I guess, in the springtime or maybe early summer, but apparently it's in rough shape again. And then I have one constituent on Harris Hall Road who's concerned about ash trees. And I noticed we had a high wind event the other night, and I moved a couple of trees out of the road. I know you're out doing spot tree removal. Just speaking of Harris Hall Road and the Hampton Motor District, it seems like you could go from the town of Washington all the way up to the junction with Pick Brown Hollow and remove quite a few trees. I realize it probably can't all be done at once, but there are a number that are really a safety hazard.
Yeah, we're getting those requests from all over.
I bet you are.
We're just getting those, because we can, our funds will allow us.
Okay, thank you. I'll summarize it in email.
Okay, that'd be great.
Thanks for coming today.
You're welcome.
Mr. Perry, do you have anything?
No, well, I had something earlier. I spoke to Mr. Nesbit about it before the meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Nesbit. You have a nice day.
Two quick things. One, VDOT got in touch with me about a legal tire dump that they were dealing with along one of our rideways and worked with the local superintendent to get the dump truck full tires for more brought over to the landfill and they just were packed it up and then sent to the cyclone. So it's unfortunate that we see that.
Where was the?
I don't want to be an attractive nuisance driving that, so.
Okay.
And the other is, this board authorized me to complete the application, land use permit for the pedestrian signs in Sperryville in September. And got an email today from VDOT asking, you know, what's going on with these? And I had to fess up and say I was authorized to apply for that, but I haven't done it yet. So I'll get back on that and make sure we can have the application.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to the next agenda item, the various act CRF distribution, the consideration of this funds. And this, well, actually, the next agenda item is Sperryville, improved pedestrian safety and traffic. We've already incorporated that to the previous item.
I figured we were there.
Yeah, so that takes us to the WISP distribution, uh, WISP funding.
Mr. Goff, and I met for several hours last week. And worked through all the different information on this. I included a bullet list of topics and questions that we worked through. Mr. Goff prepared to speak to those, and then we can have Fishman give us the conclusion.
As Mr. Curry said, we met extensively to go over how this could be accomplished. And one of the major things that we discovered in our research was that in order to really affect what we're trying to do, it's in our view necessary to create a broadband authority. It's Section 50.2, 54, 31.3. The local governing body made my resolution to create an authority after the public hearing. That's gotta be advertised at least one time in the local headquarters. Containing a descriptive summary, reference, and data for the resolution can be viewed. It must be not less than 30 days before the public hearing. The resolution must also include the articles of incorporation for the authority. And after the adoption of the resolution, it must be filed with the SEC. That creates an entity that would exist for a period of 50 years. At the public hearing, and this is very interesting. If the board in its discretion judges that there is a significant amount of opposition to what is proposed, the board may on its own initiative petition the circuit court for an order of referendum. Or there's a second method, and that is that if 10% of the opposed voting public qualified voters file a petition with the board, then the board shall petition the circuit court to order such a referendum. The board in the creation of this authority must describe the membership, which has to be not more than five nor more than an equal number of supervisors on the local governing bodies. Board of Supervisors, which of course here is five. The authority shall have the authority in the resolution to elect from their own members a chairman who must be a member. One member must be a member from the board supervisors. The secretary and treasurer need not be members, but they also must be elected by the authority itself. You can require in that creating a document the requirement to submit to annual financial statements to, for them to submit to annual financial statements in a form prescribed by the upper public accounts. And you can also require an audit at your discretion for any fiscal due to which the authority exists. The board of supervisors may contract with the authority for the provision of qualifying communication services as defined under Title 56-484.71. And the powers of this authority include, which I think are germane to the proposal that is before the board now, that the board supervisors may lend in advance or give money to such authority. And the authority, of course, also more complicated, can do two other things. They can issue revenue bonds. And they may contract with outside billing agencies to bill for the provision of these services. All this, of course, is gonna be way out of standard. Necessary for us to transfer money to an outside company, particularly whomever it may be. Blue Ridge, or Piedmont, Prop Dan Services, or whomever the other groups that have expressed interest in this project. But in order for us to do a public private type of arrangement in the absence of an economic development authority, this is what Mr. Curry and I believe need the cleanest way to do so. But it does require, as I've said, the public hearing. We also were of the opinion that, as to who can be the provider, that this, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Curry, but we both concluded that this was a project that there would have to be a request for proposal on since the only emergency that really exists at this point is, of course, the running on the time clock for the cares money. We agree that it is a proper subject of cares money expenditure because of the fact that the schoolchildren are on remote learning. And we have really limited, of course, service available for those families. So obviously, this is a COVID-related issue. But it's, I think we have to be careful in parsing whether or not the emergency is that particularly, or whether or not by putting out a request for proposal, that it might simply be delayed past the end of December. And of course, who knows what Congress is gonna do as far as the extension of that. Now, let's see, what's the other issue that we?
The other is that.
Oh, the zoning. Right now, on the, you can have an 80-foot wooden pole, not to exceed 80 feet. That's a giant piece of wood. That's like a sequoia or something. I've never even seen one. But the, in order to make this work, the way these facilities are constructed is erector set. They drag these pieces up and bolt them together in place in the spot where they're gonna be presumably on top of some some hill or mountain. Whatever, you know, you're not gonna get an 80-foot pole up there. Plus, if it's gonna be 80 feet, you're gonna have to have it 15 feet or 20 feet in the ground. So you're probably talking about a 100-foot pole. Right now, the ordinance would have to be amended to allow for the provision of other structures other than a wooden pole for this to work. That requires, of course, zoning, a public hearing. That also requires referral to the planning commission or a joint meeting of the planning commission and the board of supervisors to consider that. And you have to follow 2204 in order to advertise that, that, that joint meeting for that purpose. So there's a couple of steps. First of all, you're gonna have to amend the zoning ordinance. Hopefully, that in itself might attract the private industry to take this up on their own. Who knows? But that's step one. Step two is to decide whether to, to have a request for proposals issued because we do have more than one provider that's expressed interest in this sort of thing in the county. If there were a protest, of course, that would stop us in our tracks. And we would have to regroup at that point, which they would have the right to do if they, if they felt that they were excluded from a legal bid. So there are these several steps, but it can be done. But it's highly doubtful, from the view of Mr. Curry and myself, that we can get this done before the deadline currently for the CARES Act. And I forgive you.
No, I'll just add that I did prepare, Mr. Goff and I worked through the current Section 17-12 extension in the zoning laws. And I did provide and attach to the four docs the potential strike through version that the board should entertain. Adds metal, a single wooden or metal facility pole or towers. And also includes in public safety as a user of those poles. The one provider said, well, if we put the poles up on the place, public safety can use it. Well, in order to enjoy that exemption, I think we would, public safety would have to be listed. Now, this would only be for the poles or towers that are 80 feet or less above, standing 80 feet or less from the ground surface. So this is, there are a lot of pros and cons to modifying the ordinance in this way through an exemption. And exemption has been in place for a long time, and I couldn't say that it's ever been used. So it's suggested as written, it really doesn't offer much value added to the community or to this person. If you did change it like a shum or something similar, we've heard from private providers, they would be much more useful. They probably would use it. So whether that be 40, 60, 80 feet, whatever it happens to be based on the site they select, it's much easier for them to haul bags of concrete and short sections of lattice tower that get bolted together than a giant wooden pole.
I guess the theory is that if, if the zoning ordinance were amended to allow that, that that would open the gate, and then public, I mean, private industry would rush in to take advantage of that. As it is now, it's completely uneconomical to consider an 80-foot wooden pole. Even if you could obtain such a thing, it's, would be a monumental construction task to get it to the tops of the hill somewhere. The thing would probably be three feet around with the base and weigh, I can only imagine, five, six tons.
So there would be no influence from the county for people who want to construct such a tower. And no zoning permit, that's completely exempted from the zoning board. There would have to be building permits to show that it meets the building portion. It isn't gonna blow over and the foundation and everything is fine. But they would be allowed anywhere by right. So that's, there's some risk there. And it would be difficult probably to construct an exemption to narrow that down. If that was deemed to be too much risk, the board may wanna look into the ordinance in other areas and allow through some other process that requires permitting that is restricted in very certain ways and numbers and things like that. It would be much more complicated to sort through.
Any questions about this?
Madam Chair, my, from Mr. Curry. Having, having read the redline version of the current draft. Thank you, or. Having, having reviewed the redline version of the comprehensive plan, there's a fairly robust section in the telecommunications chapter that goes to concealment. And my question would be, would it be overbearing or otherwise unwieldy in, in your proposed redrafting of this provision to add concealment-related language or some kind of, I don't wanna suggest permitting overlay here, but maybe some provision that says concealed to the maximum extent possible based on some review of the concealment plan?
I think you may be able to work in some wording that requires some sort of camouflage. Although it gets complicated. There's no submission. Who's checking to see whether it's, and then it's, to have it subjective that they put a tower up without a permit, and somebody looks at it and says, oh, that's not camouflage.
That's my point.
And then it's a zoning enforcement matter. The tower is already there. I think that's very difficult to do that. If we're wanting to try to find ways to require that, you might have to find different avenues. You could exclude certain colors or something like that, or require it to be painted a certain color or something like that, and you can probably put that.
Okay.
Towers or poles that are painted X color.
You can green.
You can green, but we, you know, if it's, if it's projected against trees, we know that works pretty well. If it's projected against the sky, it may be less than this country. The mass of these towers is so small because of how tall they are. You get a bit of distance away, and you're not gonna see it. Where you have a close view, you're gonna see it. Of course, we see electrical lines and old building. So, you know, it's an appetite for what we want to see. And relative to the comprehensive plan, that plan's not on the books yet, so.
Right. Well, I just raised a question in my mind, but I also, I mean, the reason I asked is for, for all the reasons you just expressed, which is, it's a, it's a zoning ordinance unless you really make it onerous and difficult to permit days. You don't, you don't have an ultimate guarantee of what the towers are.
The other way to go about it would be to make a defined use for these. Right now, we have like category one, two, three, four towers. And you can make another category, allow it by right, P in the table, and then have a section that talks about things that you must do in order to get this by right use.
Like consultation with the zoning administrator regarding the color and concealment plans, something like that.
Right, right. And then the issue is only permit costs 35 to 50 bucks, and it's not a public hearing and all that.
Yeah, that's what I wanted.
But there's some process, and that would be more onerous for a project owner, but not a lot more.
Correct.
But it's, zoning ministers don't like subjectivity if they can't, and they want it black and white. If there are some specific things that the board wants to see, each one of these uses must meet A, B, C, and D. And we can write them down in ways that we think are protective of the community overall and balanced within each of broadband. That's part of the.
That's my, that's my main question.
So do we think that, do we wanna come up with the additional language? Or do we wanna ask the county attorney to add additional language regarding camouflageing of the menopause?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I think we, we sent the message at our Cares Act allocation meeting that this is a top priority for many reasons. So I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna stand in the way of progress at all. But I do think it important that, especially because it's, it is in the current top plan, like this concept of concealment, we would be remiss if we didn't adopt that in some form, in some way, if we're entertaining this proposal, so.
If the board can get your arms around the big picture of goals that you would like to see put in place with this to allow this sort of tower, then myself and Ms. Summers, Mr. Goff can put some specific wording behind it, bring it back to you. And I would say you can give it to the planning commission to do, but they've got a long list of things to do. So, you know, if we take it on as staff, then we can bring it back to you. But we would need to really understand what is it that you want to accomplish?
Yeah, I, I mean, in summary, I think it's important that we have some requirement that the, the party installing a lattice-type tower make some reasonable effort to conceal the towers, and that the county has some say. County government has some say in how that concealment plan is implemented, something along those lines.
Any concern with the number that would be allowed? There's some language in the draft comprehensive plan trying to get towards no more. Would it be necessary that be some representation that is needed? And maybe running followed state language down.
I'm not really worried about the number in terms of proliferation because it's gonna be a market-based plan driving the installation of these. People are gonna put them where there's already one.
It's not $20, it's driven, you know.
No, there's gonna be no, no payoff to installation if there's already one that's serving a community or a location. So I'm not really concerned with proliferation. I was thinking something like on a single wooden or similarly, similarly camouflage metal utility pole or tower. And just keeping, keeping the language simple. I'm not sure if it's, I was concerned with the legality of limiting it to one kind of building material. Like what's the, what's the, now that I know it's obviously is a building material, metal structure. But I think the point I would make, if I was wanting to build a tower, is I can camouflage it better than a piece of wood. So why can't I build my tower?
Yeah, you have a great argument in the answers because it's not exempted. And you can't, you just have to go through the, the tower section.
Chair, I think we need to make sure that maintenance is a part of this. Because when it goes up, it may be camouflaged, but how long does that last? Who's responsible for remating or recamouflage, etc.?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I, I think the maintenance issue is already covered by language in our zoning ordinance. I mean, if it's something that goes up, it's gotta be maintained.
Well, yes, if it would be incorporated into the zoning ordinance, it's used by right. But if it's incorporated into the exemption, the zoning ordinance never comes black.
Yeah, and another thing, I think maybe we're, we're kinda looking at something that doesn't exist, and we have some sort of fear of phobia of it. The broadband assembly last week, everybody talked about towers that had to be, they wanted to be like 130 foot or 75 above, you know, adjacent tree cover. The presentation that we had two weeks ago from the local provider, they were talking about some hidden in the trees. So I think you got two totally different animals there. If it's, if it's hidden in the trees, it's already camouflaged. If it's hidden in the trees, it's already camouflaged.
I agree. It'd be based on your elevation of the mountain or where the tower is and whether you can use the terrain to bed your tower versus just sitting a tower in the middle of the field. So is there a general thought on the direction of whether to expand the exemption or kind of permit it some other way or exempted, exempted or permitted to the zoning ordinance?
I think, from my perspective, I believe we can do the exemption if it's not above the tree cover. I mean, or at or around adjacent tree cover. But when you start going up, you know, considerable amount above the tree cover, like twice the tree height, then that has to be a permission issue.
Right now, it's limited to a few. And that brings up issues that, with trees all around us today and the tower getting bigger, tomorrow the trees will be smaller. Also, if you're on the side of a mountain and you're halfway up, you can go up above the trees, but you can still be blocked up against the side of the mountain. That's another thing to consider. Maybe staff can bring you two different options, an exemption option and a permitting option and then allow the board to see which way makes more sense to you.
Okay.
Yep.
So that takes care of one part of the discussion, which is zoning change. The other item of the three items, the broadband authority. And I didn't stay for the entire broadband meeting, but I understand there is nothing on this to supervise, don't I?
There it is. And I don't know if you want to respond to, speak to broadband now?
That would be wonderful.
That did include the comments under the committee reports, but it is important. There are a couple.
I mean, I would be interested to hear about it in regards to the formation of an authority at this point in the conversation. I think that's appropriate. Thank you, Ms. Bond.
Thank you. And just for, you didn't say, would you prefer to get a hold of it or would you have more other aspects to it?
It's probably wonderful if you give us the whole report and then you don't have to stay for the whole meeting.
That's just fine.
Because you're usually such a tripper and we appreciate it so very much.
Well, I want to thank also the supervisors that attended the broadband meeting on Wednesday, September 30th, to support the broadband committee was doing. I appreciate that, seeing you there. The, real quickly, six out of seven members of the committee were present and Ray Farm, they're interested in remaining on the committee. I advise the board that previously Michaeloni had submitted a letter of resignation. And we just heard today that John Sinisky has also submitted a letter of resignation. So we may have two openings for broadband committee. And there were members in attendance that had already expressed an interest in joining the list. We may be able to solicit applications from them. We've also talked about very briefly the presentation by Datastream Broadband, which Ms. Donahue arranged for our presentation. And you're right, Mr. Fraser, the solution that Datastream offered for high-speed, it's been whiz-bang, broadband coverage was essentially taller towers. They were familiar with the problems with Radhamanet County geographic features and the tree cover and so forth, but their solution seemed to be just to put towers higher than that, which really puts them in conflict, I think, with some of the other priorities in the county. The two items of business, the committee has been reviewing the draft 2020 comprehensive plan and focusing on where priorities for preserving the county's watershed are juxtaposed with the priorities for developing broadband networks, particularly when it comes to these towers. The broadband committee passed a, approved a memorandum of recommendations for the Board of Supervisors' review that would include recommended modifications to the wording of the proposed comprehensive plan that would help future land use planners resolve any of these conflicts. It's just the interest would be to provide consistency and predictability to land use planning decisions if there were some slight wording changes in the comprehensive landline provided. I believe you have a copy of the proposed wording in your package. It's the wording in blue. It also revoices the county's liability to the county that maybe land use decision, maybe statutory, if they are done on an inconsistent basis. You've heard from Mr. Goff about the virtues and values of establishing broadband authority. And the next item of business, the committee, let me take a step back regarding his first set of recommendations in the complaint. It's not, there's no request of action by the board, just to consider what the committee was putting together. The second item of business was also two-step motion. Let me read what it is, so it jumps to the question of the broadband authority. It says pursuant to Anna's decision, September 30, 2020, the Radhamanet County Broadband Committee makes the following recommendations. Oops, that's too far. That the Radhamanet County Board of Supervisors consider developing a broadband authority as provided for in Virginia Wireless Services Act, or Authorities Act, responsible for planning and implementing universal broadband services in the county as defined in the 2020 draft of the Radhamanet County Comprehensive Plan. The second recommendation is that the Radhamanet County Broadband Committee provide the Board of Supervisors with a blueprint for an appropriate broadband authority, including all the necessary documents for its establishment in accordance with the Virginia Wireless Services Act. Provided quote citations, which include section 50.2-5431.1, etc. And I suggested that that be done before the November 2nd Board of Supervisors meetings. Those are the two recommendations that the committee would, has presented in written form in packets for the board's approval, modifications, or other today. And that concludes our report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
I have a comment. As being the board member on the committee, it became painfully clear Wednesday night that part of the reason the broadband committee wasn't able to move quickly enough on a potential resolution was because we didn't have an EDA or an authority. And that's when the conversation began with, let's not get stuck in this position again. We've got two authorities in the county, both as far as I know are working well. I don't know how to make them work in happening in a county. So let's move forward and adopt a broadband authority so that we can make things happen much quicker and not have to wait monthly for meetings or special call meetings.
So I guess that brings me to my question about the timeline, I guess Mr. Goff and Mr. Curry, that I'm looking for an answer on. It seems like an authority is a likely four-month conclusion. It seems like a change in the zoning is in order. The RFP piece of the puzzle, at what point can we put out an RFP? Do we have to wait until we have an authority in place or can we do that at this time?
I think that the county could probably jump into that and transfer responsibilities onto the authority. However, the authority probably, we would probably want the authority to be the driver's seat to develop the RFP. And draft documents, actually, have already been prepared based on what's been done around the state and what the state folks are telling us. Relative to overall timing, I know there's been a sense of urgency due to COVID and distance learning requirements and probably mostly availability of CARES Act funds. And I said before, it's a good idea with CARES Act funds, probably a good idea with county funds. And we know that through the accounting of eligible expenses for CARES Act, that the board has some flexibility going forward with fund balances that you have now and will have after December 30th to appropriate significant sums towards this sort of project if that's the board's desire. I don't think you should be constrained or feel constrained with the December 30th deadline.
If I could, these masks, it makes it very difficult to actually ascertain what I thought I heard. But Ms. Donahue just said that with an authority, you wouldn't have to worry about called meetings or monthly meetings?
Our Board of Supervisors are monthly meetings, the 30 days really.
But the authority is still the same obligations that our board has, so it wouldn't change anything.
They would have the same, as far as I understand anyway, same obligations as far as called meetings and that type of thing. But we could do it every week for a month if we wanted to.
Well, so can this board.
It's just very difficult to get everyone together.
Well, I think most of the members are happy to participate. I think it's a challenge for staff to participate and you've threatened to see the humor of the authority.
Well, that kind of seems to be going adverse of what I was going to recommend. I thought that we might recommend to do what Orange County does in the point this very board member, this board should have authority. So we would be the authority that Orange has.
Can do that, absolutely. Elliot Weber and Margaret and I met and his recommendation was at least three board members be a part of the authority.
I think that would be a good idea since this is new, they're there for us. And Paul, you're telling me for 20-plus years, their WSA usually has retired members of the board, former members, so that they have continuity.
Mr. Whitson, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I'm glad Mr. Fraser raises, because I had a question for Mr. Goff. So if you were reading, interpreted, there was language in there about a member of the Board of Supervisors shall be a member of the authority.
At least one.
At least one. And are you, is this provision that you're reading generally applicable to authorities or specifically to a broadband authority?
What I'm reading from is specific to the broadband.
Okay, because my question, and Ms. Donahue mentioned, we have two other authorities, one of which really operates as a public utility and there's not a board member on the Radhamanet County Water and Sewer Authority. So since you raised that language, my question is, should there always be one Board of Supervisors member on any authority? Or is it, by every type of authority or?
So when, just like there would have to be the articles incorporation of the new authority, there were those for the existing authorities. And those are, you'll see in our local code, there's a parallel local ordinance section for each of those that defines and stuff.
Our WSA had one. I hate to interject, but I'll forget to say that until Mr. Estes, so timely passing, he was the board member that represented.
Yeah, I think you certainly could appoint him to the Water and Sewer Authority if you wanted to.
I mean, it just raises a question. One or four members of the governing body of the locality may be appointed board members of the authority.
So it's a may or not shall?
One or four. So it could be all hired.
It is in order.
But you can't have more than five or more than the number of board supervisors. I didn't want to get sidetracked. I just raised that question. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish.
I thought I heard the county attorney make the statement that in order to allocate money for the CARES Act, it would be facilitated by establishing a, this kind of organization. Is that in agreement?
And it would allocate any money to a private business that's not in exchange for a good authority.
You need an authority to do that.
Yeah.
So it looks to me if we're going to move forward with what we're talking about, that they might have to have an authority. Is that not wrong there?
No, I think we do.
And it's basically an economic development or community development effort where the county government is making investment in private business. Most cases, the county is buying a good or a service. And if we're buying a good or a service, that's covered by the Virginia Public Procurement Act. If we're not buying a good or a service, if we're making an investment in a private company to help that law of finance come into play so that it makes sense for them. That's where counties aren't given the authority by, you know, great-grandfather Dillon to do that. And so we have to find the pathway through the code of Virginia that allows it.
So to facilitate what we want to do, we go on the chapter three of the authorities, that, not here.
Right, so fuck here, the EDA together with the board supervisor, she has an agreement with a provider. A three-way agreement.
I think the bottom line is that we have to at least help the public hearing.
I agree. I think we need to move this forward with as much expediency as we can. It's a pressing problem. I'm also of the mind that at least to get this underway, for a structure where the broadband authority is redundant to the Board of Supervisors. We can revisit that down the road, but I think to begin with that this is probably at the top of the list for most folks in this county, especially working families, families with children, people that need telehealth. And we're having work sessions anyway, pretty much every month. And may as well put another log on the fire here and get it done.
I just don't want to lose the skills of Ms. Bond and the technique of folks that are engaged, if at all possible.
I wondered about that. Is there a way, Mr. Goff, can you have, I mean, you have an official authority, but can you have technical advisors or anyone like that that you keep on with the authority?
Yeah, you can have hired staff.
You can have a full hired staff. You can outsource your secretary treasurer. You can hire engineers. You can hire consultants. You can hire anybody to do this. And I imagine most of these authorities do. I mean, I know that as a lawyer, but not as an engineer or attorney, I'm not exactly familiar with the technicalities. So, and I'm sure you all aren't either, but, and so, yeah, I think it would be helpful if you could hire those folks. But I also have something I need to know in order to draft the resolution. This code requires that you're going to have to have the name of the locality creating the authority and names, addresses, and terms of the office of the first members of the board and also the address for your principal office. So I would suggest that we simply use the principal office. Perhaps we use the county administrator's office. And then you all would need to tell us who was going to comprise the first, first, I'm sorry, move that out of right. So the first, the first slew of officers of this authority, we need to go ahead and put that in this resolution.
Well, I think we ought to move it forward as quickly as possible. And I don't know, Mr. Goff, feel free to sit down. I, you know, it's going to take us a night clearing to get through all this stuff today. I think it would be, I mean, I think it should be redundant to the board. Mr. Fraser thinks it should be redundant to the board. How does everybody else feel about it?
What do you mean by redundant?
I mean, the same five people that are supervisors should be the first five members of the broadband authority.
Oh. I would just assume not beyond, but it may be.
Okay.
Definitely engage board members. This is going to be a whirlwind tour.
It's going to move fast. So that's a yes from you?
Oh, absolutely.
Your end. Mr. Whitson?
Yeah, for certain, and to Ms. Donahue's point, I'm not sure we resolved her. I didn't catch it. But I just want to make sure there's some way that we can include certain members of the current broadband committee going forward because I think we'd be remiss to start all over without their expertise. And Mr. Goff spoke about paid staff, but I don't know if we'd be in any way limited to just having other non-going members?
I don't think there's any such limitation.
Okay.
I mean, it's just what I'm concerned with is I want the notice that has to go out to be in conformity with the requirements of the statute. Now, you don't have to have all board members. You can appoint someone else. They say Mr. Parrish didn't want to be on it. You could have whomever the chairman of the broadband committee is now, whomever you choose. It's just that this says the names, addresses, and terms of office of the first members of the board of the authority. That's under the resolution creating the authority to include articles of incorporation. So we would also have to draft the articles of incorporation. I think if we're going to move it forward, I think that to get all this stuff together and get it done correctly, that the chair, I would probably urge the chair to call a special meeting to approve these documents before the advertisement were to go forth, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page.
Okay.
And then I would think that would probably take optimistically approximately two weeks or so.
Okay. We, I concretely thought we would have a work session on November 19th, that evening. We haven't even been having a work session. Is that agreeable to everyone?
I would not be able to.
Is that Monday?
It is Monday evening.
It really can't be Wednesday for me, the 21st. It really can't be Wednesday for me, the twenty-first.
Does the nineteenth work for you, Mr. Fraser?
It does work for me.
Mr. Woodson?
I'm not going anywhere.
Okay.
Never.
So the broadband committee has offered to help develop the documents by November second.
A member of a group.
So my hearing is, if you don't want their help, or you want it earlier, or you want that to feed into work being done by the county attorney.
That's a good question.
I mean, they're not copying the documents. Couldn't we pretty much use another locality for a template and then just make sure that it has the right.
Yeah, I think that's what Margaret started to do.
Yes.
Well, I certainly would like to have her input. I mean, I think it might speed the process up.
Well, if everyone is more willing to, we can undertake this a little bit further every November second meeting and not make a work session on the nineteenth.
So will we have the work session on anything else?
Well, nothing yet, yes.
Okay.
So do we need an emotion to move forward with the broadband authority?
I think, I mean, I think that would be in one. Mr. Parrish, is that something, I know everything pulls its staff horn and sometimes motions help to direct that.
Yeah, as long as it's clear. I guess what I'm hearing is that the board is interested in moving forward with an authority. Mr. Goff read through some of the requirements of that. And Ms. Bond has researched heavily the requirements. And so what I'm hearing is, at the November second meeting, we should have some pretty clear documents provided. There may be some fill-in-the-blank relative to who the members are or things like that, but this should be easy for the board to finish, polish it off on November second, and then provide direction that specific documents are the documents that you want advertised for the eventual public hearing, which would have to be at least thirty days beyond that. And then we really have to think about probably not doing it at Thanksgiving or Christmas or sort out exactly when that's going to happen.
Sure.
So if somebody wanted to make a motion, that you could, but I think I certainly know what she wants.
That sounds satisfactory.
Sounds very, okay, what you said. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
That takes us to the next item on the agenda. Actually, let's take about five minutes right to end, and then we'll. Thank you. We're hot here till the whole couple of weeks that are orders. I know we have quite a few things left on the agenda for this afternoon, so I'd like to suggest that we reorder the agenda, being we have people here that have joined us to debate certain topics. I'd like to go ahead and suggest we next undertake the discussion and consideration of parental leave policy under the business. And I'd like to suggest we also, we often consider after that to authorize the county illegal counsel file on Conover for the Bragg one case. So I'd suggest we move those up and then we return to the discussion regarding the second allocation from the Commonwealth and the DARE Act. And I would put that as a change in the form of motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Parrish, on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Right. That takes us to the discussion and consideration of the parental leave policy. Is the chairman of the library board here today, Ms. Portina?
She's at very high risk of COVID if she doesn't attend meetings like us.
Very good. Thank you.
I have attached the, she sent the board docs as well as the written order, which Ms. Parrish also handed out. It's, we'll do it. The email is there. We can pull it up. Very long story short, it's that the Library Board of Trustees re-voted, requested the board adopt parental leave policy that parallels what Governor, this is all we did, to executive order number twelve in twenty eighteen, grant the release of parental leave in addition to all leave on Vol. State. There was a note that it was not unanimous vote. A vote was niconized against that. But it is the will of the Library Board of Trustees to bring this request to you.
And then can I just ask, because what I actually have trouble getting my head around with Frager is how this came to us.
Sure.
Because it seems to me, if it's a five-two vote to bring it to us, I guess the question in front of my mind is, is why wasn't there a vote to that extent to do it?
There was a vote to enact it for the library board employees, and that vote failed. And I voted against that as well. And my rationale, part of my rationale was that I couldn't support benefits for the three library board employees that weren't also granted to county employees. So the next step for the library board was to, at a later meeting, was then to ask the Board of Supervisors to enact a policy for county employees that guys bringing people to public playgrounds, so to say.
So you voted against it, and this is not quite correct.
Well, I'm sorry. This is, this is not a public comment, period. So once we get through our discussion, if there's something that you'd like to add, you can ask to be recognized.
Can I ask a question as a point of order, though?
Yes, Mr. Fraser.
When we first started the meeting, did we have a majority of the school board here? I mean, the library board here as well?
It would, that would appear to be the case.
I'm afraid we just keep running into those types of situations, not only with, you know, with the library board, and we have the elector board up here, all three members positioning for something. Our board keeps showing up, a majority of us at different meetings, and I'm just getting really concerned with it to start with. I think it really, it really looks a bit bad. We basically had a unscheduled, unadvertised meeting with the library board and we're not with the board.
It is something to be concerned with.
Last week, we had four members of the Board of Supervisors that showed up at the broadband committee. And a couple of weeks before that, we had four members of the five that showed up at the chief's committee, which is a committee of the association, which should have also advertised that meeting, and it didn't.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but we did not have a majority of the library board here today. We only have four.
I'm on the board, so yes, you did. Number five. So the FOIA officer for the library board trustees is the library director. So I can't comment on that. I'm required to be here, and I'm here.
I would like clarification, though, because I feel like part of my job is to make sure I understand what's going on. And if we can't be in a room together, even though we're not talking together, we're just listening, is that against the FOIA rules?
It could be. Art can speak for what he thinks. My belief is that it hinges on the transaction of public business. And so if you are transacting public business actively, then you can't do that. If you're in a room listening to what's going on to inform yourself, I believe that's perfectly acceptable. Mr. Connick requested, as Mr. Jackson requested, the executive director of the FOIA council to opine on this. And the answer was basically, well, it was really not a clear answer. It's not been decided, but it could be this and it could be that. And so I guess until it's ultimately litigated, then it's hard to parse what the exact words mean. But I believe you're safe if you're not transacting public business. And so the more you can remove yourself from that, if you attend a meeting of a committee or an authority and there's multiple board members there, you know, it's probably best not to make, have it look like you're participating, which means you should remove yourself from where the area of activity is, you know? Sit along the wall rather than at this front table. Don't talk. And so if you're just back there taking notes, it's hard for somebody to say that you're transacting public business, in my opinion.
So that, since I brought it up, I mean, that's what we were limited to at the broadband committee meeting. I couldn't even ask a question because there were four of us there. And the thing is, I had received an invitation basically to be there, so if it was done by invitation, then it was a planned situation. I don't know if the rest of them had actually had an email about it, but, I mean, that's the concern I have. We couldn't transact business. And if we actually sent out emails to each other talking about being there, then that means it was planned, and that means it's pretty much going over the edge, definitely. But that's actually different than what happened here today. We actually had a majority here present of two bodies, and only one was advertised. And we're talking public business matter.
Right. And I'm not the FOIA officer for the library board trustees, but if individuals convey their personal opinion to the board, that certainly is different than a majority of that body coming together and taking some action. And we've known without a notice of a meeting, they can't legally take action. Any action that was taken, not used. That doesn't mean that the public shouldn't be aware that a majority gathered.
They did identify themselves as individuals with their individual concerns all over.
But the chair provided a pretty lengthy email to the board members, which is attached to the doc. And that is, the resolution's actually rather short, and she added a lot of other information to that. That is what the library board brought to the Board of Supervisors, what is attached, what is written. Individual members may have perspectives on that, but that is the action of the library board trustees.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish.
And if you'd like, I can read the resolution, which was resolved that the Red Hand County Library Board of Trustees hereby request that the Red Hand County Board of Supervisors adopt a parental leave policy in accordance with the Commonwealth of Virginia's Executive Order Number Twelve dated the twenty-fifth of June twenty eighteen, effective October one, twenty twenty, for all employees of Red Hand County, including library employees. That's the resolution.
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion, and you do not adopt this. I agree that we need to do what we can do to attract young people. Don't think there's a real connection here between an employee of the library board and an employee of the county. And I do think that this is something that we should look at in the future for parental leave, but it doesn't necessarily have to be the exact same thing that the governor and open present. And I don't think it's appropriate for us to adopt this at this time, but I do think it's something that we need to look at in the near future. But that's how I feel about it.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish.
There was a motion.
I mean, I think that I agree with you. And I would like to convey it, though, as a motion to table, because what I think we need to do is do a comprehensive review of our personnel policy at the time our manual was completed. What I have heard from our employees is that we do have a very rich benefits package. And just because we offer this, doesn't mean that we don't offer a lot of wonderful things that people do want to be able to take advantage of. And so I guess from my perspective, before we offer this, I'd like to see people's opinions about what their priorities are in their benefits package. I think that it's difficult for me because I feel like this is a policy change request thinly veiled as a personnel issue. And that makes it very difficult and very personal. And I really do very much enjoy value and respect for people involved, but that has made this a very challenging situation to negotiate. I know county staff has worked very hard to make sure that the situation goes as well as it can for everyone involved. That being said, I think the library board has moved forward independently with pay scale changes before the county has moved forward with pay scale changes. So this sort of idea that the library board can't do something until the county does it, it's not the reality situation. The library board is free to do whatever they want to do. The question is, how do those votes come together? So in my mind, that's the question that I wanted to know. How did it come to us and not be something that they could resolve in-house?
Complicating the matter is that the Code of Virginia requires the board supervisors to fund the library board.
Correct.
But it doesn't offer a blank checkbook. So there has to be a process, you have to adequately fund it. And so that's where I think the two boards, you know, have to work together to sort out what that means. It means that there's, it's hard for the library board to hire fifteen people and say, board supervisors, you must not pick these people when we don't have an expanded library, no hours or anything. And so that's what they are always, if they can meet one night, have to be thinking about, is this a reasonable public expenditure that the board should recently have to pay for? And I said, as I said before, when I'm looking at it as a county representative on that board, that's where my thought of, I would like to see these benefits parallel the best we can. And I think in the future, it would be very good if the board supervisors had an agreement with the library board and possibly with the water sewer authority that recognizes and captures the fact that the county board supervisors and staff are running payroll and providing healthcare programming and all of that, and, you know, who's doing what for what and why. And I think that would be good. We don't have that right now. We loosely know that the county's going to take care of their payroll and their healthcare, you know, signing up for healthcare and provisioning for short-term disability for members when they have to go on parental leave and all that. But as much as we are separate, we are joined in the head.
I'd like to make it clear that I'm in favor of parental leave for county employees. I don't necessarily think that the governor and open is the formula that we need to adopt. And that we can take care of our people, you know, at a, you know, at a Red Hand County. So that's something that you can look at.
And Ms. Smith noted, it is a function of, and I believe it's the entire compensation package. It's the dollars that you're paid. It's the vacation leave. It's the sick leave. It's the bereavement leave. It's, you know, the short-term disability, long-term disability. All of that put together, the healthcare is provided, the entire package. And the board wants to be as generous as you can to attract and retain all of its staff. And no one piece of that should ever be looked at in fact, in my perspective.
So my question is, it failed, to do this failed within the library board itself. Does the library board have the same rules for reintroducing topics that our board does?
No. And I think it, the people on the library board voted for the reasons they voted on that. And some was that they didn't want to spend the investment fund money that is targeted for capital improvement on a recurring cost, not knowing when and if the board would ever step in alignment with that, this kind of policy, if there are costs. And the similar was, discussion was made when the new director was hired or recruited. What should the salary be? Should we take the leave as a library board and increase that salary up to what the market study says, so we can attract the right person for the job at this critical point in time? This turnover doesn't happen very often here, apparently. It's been twenty-seven years. And so the library board, very eyes wide open, said, this is very important, and we need to dip into our reserves in order to fund this balance, if necessary, to make it work. And we know the board supervisors is planning to do this to the pay study, and then COVID comes along. The time period for which the board kind of catches up with that probably would be a little more extended than the library board thought it would be. But they knew it was a risk worth taking. And now, of course, they have to see, so that's probably all going to come out in the long term.
But there's been changes on that board also since the first study regarding this. Isn't that correct? Because this is our element.
I believe there's been one change, yes.
Yeah.
So, yes, they can reconsider it, but.
Do you mind if I have some questions?
All right, I don't care.
Just, I won't be able to say this much longer. I'm a new member of this board. The Baker-Tilly, it's a study, correct? And we're going to receive it at some point in the not-too-distant future.
Right. So classification and compensation. The library board actually led in this area and hired Baker-Tilly before the county did.
Okay.
And the library board had Baker-Tilly complete a study for their three employees. And the Library Board had Baker Tilly complete a study for their three employees. And then the board brought Baker Tilly on to do all the county employees. And while that was happening, Baker Tilly kind of merged things so we could see everybody together. That is drafted. The county administrator working paper right now is not public.
Okay, so is there, I don't know if you can even say it, but the scope of work for which we contracted with Baker Tilly, did it include valuation of benefits to include paid parental leave as one component of an overall benefits package for employees?
Not exactly. When they look at other localities and salary scales at the other localities, they do try to gather information on the compensation package that are the other fringe-type items to see if there are items that would skew. We may pay much less, but you get free health care or something like that, right?
Will be.
But not in that detail. Now, in a parallel path, staff put together a draft personnel manual, and Baker Tilly also reviewed that document. And so those, they did comment on the entirety. And I couldn't tell you offhand what comments they had on the leave section.
But our local governing body at some point, using the Baker Tilly's study as a catalyst for discussion, will have to make decisions about county employee compensation benefits. Is that correct?
I think twofold. You'll have a personnel manual that will lay out all the benefits, right? And short-term disability, long-term disability, how much leave you are for sick leave and vacation leave, whether it's combined, and then whether there should be some parallel parental leave. And you will be reviewing and approving the classification and compensation system. They should not be done separately, right?
Right.
One big piece. And the salary should manage to be aligned with the benefits, because it is the entire package that our employees, I get paid dollars, but I also get paid health insurance program. And I get paid the opportunity to take off sick when I get sick.
Okay. I guess my bottom-line question is, will we have an opportunity to look at this as a whole and do sort of do a comprehensive analysis of what benefits, including possibly parental leave, make sense within the parameters of our own fiscal limits? Will we have enough information that comes to us to allow us to do a solid review in this regard?
Yeah, I think it's very subjective. Yes, you absolutely will perform that review, whether the analysis is at a level that would really allow you to compare what we do during the government April, because I think that's very difficult to do.
I really appreciate the advocacy from members of the Library Board, including two of my constituents, Ms. Schumay and Ms. Disarno. And so I at least want to be thoughtful in this regard. And obviously, we're in a really strange, tough period from a fiscal standpoint. And so I do want to look at this. I just want to make sure that we have the information to do an analysis and also to just know when that's going to happen, so that there's some certainty if we're telling we're not ready yet. Is it going to be this spring, or?
This is something that, the compensation, the classification compensation, we thought that we would have probably adopted that already, but they got pushed out of the budget for now, and we'll see where revenue comes in. The personnel manual, I thought that would be too long time ago, and it's been pushed aside by a number of projects. So it could come back in relative near term.
That's always the question, is in the scale of priority for what we have to do, we're just as far on the scale of priority. I mean, clearly, we had three months, four months of meetings where we could only do essential business, which was anything emergency-related or paying bills. So we got through the budget cycle. You know, we started a little work on some other things. Account plan comes along. This comes along. We've got another iron in the fire for broadband now. And we're also looking at paid staff for fire rescue. So I think personnel is very important. I'm one of the departments that voted to do the study with Baker Tilly. And it pains me not to be able to do the full report immediately for our employees, but it would have pained me more to have tax increases here. It would have been unspeakably bad. So, I mean, that's always a question we wrestle with as a board, is in the spectrum of things we need to move forward. I put this behind, I put personnel manual review behind broadband, which I would say broadband we would reasonably expect to complete, it sounds like by January. Then we're into another budget cycle.
Which is just the start of the broadband.
Well, which really is when the rubber hits the road. Then we're into budget cycle. And then, so I would think that the earliest we would get to it would be next spring.
It'd be awfully nice to be able to have some input to the budget cycle with classification and compensation and those other things. I agree with Ms. Smith that we don't want to tailor personnel policy around individuals. But I reported to the board, the individual who is driving the Library Board of Trustees members has a half a year of leave on the books. This is not a matter where eight more weeks is going to, you know, it's an issue in the next multiple months.
I asked for a yes or no vote.
Well, I don't know that we have a second.
Well, you made a motion not to do it. And I requested a motion to table it until we can take up this policy.
I don't see the advantage of taking it up.
Okay.
Because we're going to take it up whenever we want. And I'd love to know what the school gives, what they get on that. But we need to like look at that, because they're, I mean, you know, they're not counting on their school employee. But we need to compare those and move forward with this, because it's important that we have parental leave on the books for our citizens. The main reason that we need to attract young people to come here and stay here. But I don't think that this governor, Norton, is the answer necessarily. And we can't get in a hurry, and we go too fast just because one particular individual has been to be greater. So, and she's taken care of via the Library Board, if she's not a county employee. So we're kind of, you know, crossing signals here.
Do we have a motion?
I see another, there's a second. I see no harm in taking this, just keeping this behind us and then moving forward in a positive direction. I'll second it, because I think we need to have some sort of a financial study of what the ramifications could be. Because I think even the male deputies and the male, other male employees, it would affect them, too, wouldn't it?
Correct. I mean, that's, you know, a critical distinction, is it's not just expense to others. It's also fathers. It's also adoptive parents. I would think it would extend probably foster parents. I mean, I think there's a lot of situations where this would come into play. And it's important to get it right.
It's a strong county, and we need to take care of our people.
If I may, I know five months ago, or when we were talking about the health care package, there just seems to be some differences in what the school does and what we do. And our employees don't necessarily understand why that is. I think we need to look at the whole package. And if that requires additional help by Baker Tilly or whatever to do it and do it right, I think we should be willing to do that.
Possibly the peer group that works with the schools could help us with that.
All right, well, I promise you all, each full time when your chair's not here, or that you would have a chance to respond. And I certainly do want to hold good on that, now that we have a motion and a second on the table. If there's anything you'd like to add.
No, we don't want to think that.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, that takes us to the next, thank you, ladies, all for coming today. That takes us to the next item on the agenda. Authorized County Legal Counsel to file a final order for the Bradon case. Mr. Perry, did you or Mr. Brown?
Judge Parker has asked Mr. Brown and I to prepare the final order in the Bradon case, which we have endorsed. But because this involves the payment of $76,000 to the petitioner, the Craig, we felt it incumbent upon us to come in and ask your authorization. If your authorization is with the L, that's fine. Judge Parker will enter the order on his own as he sees fit. Mr. Kunt has indicated he is filing a motion for the judge to reconsider in prior to rulings. I'm not sure what the timeline is, but I think it's within the relatively near future. He also wants to append his objections to the court's ruling, to the order which is done routinely in all these civil litigation cases, as is the motion to reconsider. Generally, those motions reconsidered would be summarily dismissed. However, the judge may require us to brief it further or require us to respond in some way. I can't tell you what he's going to do. I can only tell you my sense is that he has thoroughly considered the issues and would summarily dismiss the motion to reconsider, which Mr. Kunt recognizes. So all we need from you is to go ahead, to sign the order, and submit it to the circuit court as it is drafted and included in your package today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brown. Does I have a motion in regards to this judge's item?
According to what Mr. Brown, the officer said, it seems to me it may be a month or so premature if there's still the action that there may be a reconsideration. Is there some hurry to do this?
The judge's orders to do it.
The judge's letter, the very end of the legal. The court directs responding, the court prepares the appropriate order. That's the last sentence of the entire letter from the judge. So that's what counsel has done, and parallels to Judge Parker, included in his ruling. Other action could follow, and that's up for the judge to sort out.
That's correct. So any action resulting from reconsideration, that would mean an amended order, right?
They would need amended orders, staying this one or replacing it.
Okay.
So that would be a bridge we would cross when we get to that river.
So to Mr. Perry's point, if something happens in a month that just gets replaced anyway, right?
That's right. And if the judge orders to submit yet another order dismissing, if perchance he asks for argument, and here's argument on due pleadings on the reconsideration motion, then he would direct the prevailing party in that instance to prepare the appropriate order. And again, if it involved the payment of money by this board, again, I would feel compelled to approach the board for its authorization for counsel to endorse the order as submitted.
Any other questions or motions?
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we direct counsel to sign this order as requested by the court.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Monahan. Thank you, Mr. Woodson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That takes us back to our regular agenda. And Sir Bob, if you have some more else to do, we appreciate you here for that time today.
I thank you very much, Chair.
Sorry, just a lot of things to do today. That takes us back to the CARES Act PR contribution, the second allocation from the common law.
Thank you. I turned in for you the current table, both in condensed format, on page one, as well as the full table that you've been seeking for. I shared some information with the board since between the 18th and today, relative to review of the eligible expenditure activities. I participated in a Department of Emergency Management Regional Conference Call. And the participants shared different uses that they were using locally for CARES Act dollars. Many of them were noting that they were using it for public safety payroll. I dug into that with more detail due to the frequently asked questions that we had again and talked to the county administrator, emailed the county administrator, which are Peter, neighboring communities, to ask how they were handling that. Ultimately, the fact, question number two, number 47, makes clear that localities can use public safety payroll for law enforcement and emergency services as an eligible expense against CARES Act in that if there's a presumption, and this is what fact number two states, there's a presumption that that expenditure is eligible. Rather than trying to parse out the differential portion of those expenses that were directly attributable to COVID-19, those interactions are not separable from public safety. Everything that public safety does and touches is linked over to COVID-19. And then, number 47 discusses that the benefits are wrapped in and are eligible as well, according to this. So at your 19th, at your September 18th meeting, the board took a few, decided to allocate funds to areas where there was some risk to complete on time or other barriers. One was the topic that we just discussed, which was the WISP. That was $175,000. And the other was the recreational facility board and the upgrade of the bathroom, $45,000, that the type project, and it comes down to some third. A different approach the board could take would be to recognize a portion of just this first quarter's public safety payroll, which from July to September, the entire payroll with fringes is $429,531. So if you recognize $297,589, that would fully appropriately reallocate your CARES dollars. And it would free up general fund dollars to be used for broadband and bathrooms at park. But those uses for general fund wouldn't be constrained on time, and they wouldn't be constrained on any particular strings that you may have with making sure that the expenses were eligible. And we know that the broadband discussion, time is a big issue for us. And we know they're trying to drive through the Georgia authority and actually get hours constructed by December 30, which is probably impossible. If the time gets extended, great. And then for the bathroom, they probably can get it done, and we should continue to encourage them to get it done. But if they don't, you end up having a problem. So you may as well, in my opinion, take credit for the public safety payroll. Small core, out of $1.286 million, the board has wisely invested the bulk of it, nearly a million dollars, across the community for many different reasons, from schools to everything else. And the balance is now available for you to allocate to public safety payroll and then use general fund dollars as you should did at the time.
Did we have approximately $80,000 left after our last CARES Act allocation meeting? Is that the number?
Eighty, yeah, everybody.
Okay, so then you bring the bathroom money and the broadband back in, and that gets you almost $300,000, right?
There was a line from the last meeting that I wanted to cycle back and try and capture. Mr. Eagle had presented on it. And it was, I think, $10,000 for school extended.
Was the extended learning.
An enrichment. I was hoping we could capture that today. And then I know Mr. Van Acker had indicated after the last meeting that really they needed the full $60,000. And of course, I know these numbers are fluid, and it may depend on what he can spend and give him place by end of the year. But if fully funding it on the front end means it happens faster on the back end, I'd be inclined to fund it more and fund it less.
And so I would argue not to fund it at all with CARES dollars.
I know. And I get that argument, but the CARES Act funding puts a time limit on things. And, you know, it moves, it does move it forward.
I suppose the board can put any strings you want on your general fund dollars as well, as far as time.
Yeah, my concern is just on something like the bathroom or the, I expressed my concern about using CARES Act funds for any broadband initiative. for any broadband initiative, mainly because of the timeline. I think we sent the message that these CARES Act funds are drawing our attention to really important projects, including this touchless bathroom facility on the one hand and broadband. And if, I would just hate to see us leave any CARES Act money unspent that we then have to return. So I think it's just, it's really just a, frankly, it's an accounting decision. I don't think we're taking anything away from those initiatives. I have a commitment to them.
At what point do we have to show the final numbers of how we're spending the CARES Act money?
December 30th.
The end of September.
We report it quarterly. But ultimately, we will have to show that we received goods and services by December 30th. And then we will have to show the accounting that we actually paid for those goods and services, which can trail off additional nine days or so.
So it means that, for example, on a bathroom project, you'd have to have all invoices from the vendor in hand and then pay within 90 days thereafter, right? Just as an example.
Well, no, we wouldn't necessarily have to have the invoice in hand. They could drive the last mail in December 30th, then pull up 50I, I suppose.
Jeez.
And then get the invoice the next week. But if there's bad weather, that's what happens. And they're a month behind.
Yep.
It's not eligible. Or at least the old one's not eligible. It's a question of can you buy part of the bathroom? I don't know. I believe it's just much safer from our ability to account for the dollars. The cash is already in hand. We have it in the bank. We just have to prove that we used it for eligible expenditures. And it's very easy for us to prove that we used it for eligible public safety payroll.
Now, I think that's probably the simplest thing for us to do at this point.
I agree.
The board will be discussing over the coming months as we begin to think about FY22, how revenues have been coming in. And the board froze a lot of things in the budget. And I told you when we adopted the, when you adopted that FY21 budget, that as revenue comes in, I will report back to the board, let you know how it is according to our forecasted revenue. And if it's coming in high, then the board is going to be in a position to decide, are you going to thaw some of those frozen expenditures and allow them to flow? So at the same time that's happening, we would then also have the opportunity to discuss, how are you doing, how would you like to spend some of the dollars that are, have been received? And we have as cash, but now you have offsetting general fund money that is available to be reallocated.
I concur with the rest of the board members that even this is a smart way to play it. But I guess at the end of the day, I don't want us to lose our focus on getting these things accomplished just because the accounting exercise is complete. That's my concern. I really feel like keeping that focus on getting broadband accomplished, keeping the focus on getting the part bathroom executed, you know, these are things that are more important now than ever. And just because the number on the paper, I don't, I don't want those to fall by the wayside.
Couldn't we make this decision in December if we had to?
I suppose.
That would keep the pressure on the, you know, keep the pressure cooker on the stove.
Yeah. I guess my belief is that the board has the power to influence your will anytime you want. And it doesn't take federal dollars passed through the state to make it happen.
You know, even though I'm in favor of being safe on this, I think, knowing how people can procrastinate, especially me, maybe we ought to just keep the, keep the pressure on for a little while with the CARES Act money.
I'm only speaking from our authority perspective. I'm not worried about lack of focus. I mean, people involved are very focused.
There's a bit on the street right now.
Yeah. So I just, I really, I would, I would really regret being put in a position where we're in December scrambling to spend CARES Act money when we could have already spent it and then end up giving something back. I think that sends a really bad message to our community if we mismanaged the money provided to taxpayers as part of this relief program.
We have sixty days though between now and then. We'll know at the December meeting whether we have to do this.
I think it's reasonable to say there's no chance of us spending $175,000 on broadband between now and December 30th. Let me probably not one dollar. So the board should think about how you want to allocate those dollars, if not to public safety payroll. If there's some other area you would like to allocate those, as earlier the better, because we need, it's not easy pushing money out the doors with that. So if there's some other use, that is mostly we can sort of, sort of pressure to make that happen.
Please, but like I said, the one other item that I definitely wanted to pick up was the extent of learning any reference to the schools. That $10,000.
I really think that we've given the schools quite a bit of this money. I really think somehow, somehow, if we can offset something so that we can keep that $175,000 active for broadband later, then maybe the public safety salaries would be the way to go. But I don't know. Seems like every time I go to a meeting, I get beat up on phone calls that we're just spending a lot of money. And it really is real tax money. It's not free money.
That's right. But putting CARES Act money now into qualified expenditures protects us against handing money back, which I think taxpayers would be very happy about. So again, I think we're sitting here in early October. I think Mr. Curry is exactly right, given that we're on the big ticket item, which is broadband, we're only talking about the formation of the bureaucratic mechanism that would have to exist to even dispense money, whether general fund money or CARES Act money. I just think it's our responsibility to make sure that CARES Act money is spent, which then creates, brings back in our general fund money that can be put back to those same projects without the time restrictions. I think it makes good sense, and it's a responsible thing to do.
So is it your desire to spend this on, to allocate it to our public safety salaries?
Yeah, because, I mean, I think staff's done the research to say, and I think Mr. Curry mentioned, he's had discussions with other localities, that this is a definite spending item that would survive any audit or scrutiny after the fact, because basically, these salaries are by definition COVID-related.
So that you need a motion, Mr. Curry, to reallocate the monies to make 297 a line item for public safety payroll?
I don't know that the court has voted at all on any of the allocations. You just express how you want it done. But it would be, if the table in its current form with the public safety payroll, instead of a couple of the other items, and using the public safety payroll to soak up the balance, if the entire table now meets your expectations and may be appropriate to make a vote on that. The other thing to ask is that some of these planned expenditures for some of the smaller projects, they may not put in as, you know, $5,000 for lifetime, whatever. You won't spend $3,472. If I had the leeway to then report whatever that delta is as public safety payroll, then we're good.
Right. It looks like there's plenty of bandwidth.
But, you know, the money for fire departments and the money for schools, those items are already taken care of. Now, there was an item for the fire departments, which is held open for some public health expenses that may or may not happen. They may not get enough requests. It was $20,000 that the board says I had thrown over 12D.
But I think we'd already indicated to the fire industry companies that if they were to install anything like that, that we would view them as an operating expense, and they would be.
Yeah. So if that $20,000 doesn't get used in CARES, we don't want to leave that on the table so it could just get absorbed by the public safety payroll. It gets to that. And so I would like that to be yours from the board. If motions are made, that would be in.
So help you with it. But I'll make a motion that we accept the two pages, actually, with the allocations. And if we could do it at the same time to give you the ability to put any unused funds by December 31st, I guess, to the public safety line item, so it's not lost, that would be my motion.
I think I understand what the motion is. With that in mind, I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Curry.
Is that exactly what you did, Mr. Curry?
Yes, December 30th.
Thank you, Mr. Monahan. Thank you, Mr. Frasier. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you. That takes us to, and for the human notification of our procedure regarding updated FIS and FII on.
They just love acronym topics.
Alphabet soup.
It's a study in a map, the S and E M, that's what. It seems like forever ago that I briefed the board that very shortly we would be faced with a process to update the flood maps. And then FEMA had a false start with the local advertising and local paper, and had to do that twice. And then COVID came, and things got very delayed. I just, though, in September, received the letter from FEMA stating our final determination, or letter of final determination, that we're now entering a six-month period during which we must adopt updated ordinance to adopt the new maps and study and bring our ordinance up to the current standards we want to stay in the NFIA, the National Flood Control Program. So I just want to make sure the board has caught back up on this from when we talked about it way back in 2019. And we'll be working, I'll be working on that ordinance which we've gone, or some standards provided by the state and the feds, we would do against what we have now. Because our less than 20 ordinance is an overlay and zoning ordinance, it's going to have to involve the planning commission, this very well may require a joint public hearing of the board and planning commission to meet the timetable put on us by the feds. This is, this is going to be moving forward. So another one of those items now that is on the train. That'll be the action at this point.
Very good. Next item, new business, I want voting credentials for BACO.
In past years, VACO has asked each member to provide a name of who is going to vote in under the app. That is always kind of constrained to who is attending the conference. The conference is online this year. So I know that many of you are planning to participate, but we still need to let VACO know who is the voting delegate, who is the ultimate delegate.
I think historically, you've done the voting, correct?
I did, because it was certain that I would be there. But in this case, if it's an online meeting, VACO prefers an elected official to be the voting delegate. However, if you can, the proxy statement instruct an outside elected official or a staff person to do it on your behalf. If you have board members that plan to participate electronically, I would recommend the board member take that role.
Thank you.
I forget exactly where we left at a couple of months ago.
If you want to attend, I think it's $50. I mean, it's very affordable to participate electronically as opposed to paying the hotel and all that when you have to go there. So I certainly encourage you all to participate electronically. And I just need to know whose name to list on this form. And if you wanted to meet me, I'll be happy to list my name on the form. We have to meet down there.
No.
This includes the workshops as well?
The, no, well, as far as voting, it would only be for the actual BACO business meeting when those are taken.
I mean, is the meeting itself?
Yeah, I don't think. It's, you know, three or three days like normal. The conference runs from the 9th to the 11th of November. And we need to provide this back to the BACO on November 1st.
Are you planning to attend this Sunday?
I am attending.
Would you like to vote?
I would be on.
Well, I would make the motion that I'm attending and start here, here at the BACO conference this year. Thank you, Mr. Parrish. All in favor, please say aye. Any votes? Thank you.
Any, any alternate, alternate?
Who else is going?
I'm going. I'm going.
Mr. Frisner. Mr. Frisner, do you like to vote? The BACO conference this year.
I'm going to lie tight. Put a sleeping bag down because I'm going to lie tight. Yes, I will gladly be the alternate.
Well, then I'd make a motion that you serve as alternate for the county and the BACO conference this year. Thank you, Mr. Parrish. All in favor, please say aye. Thank you. That takes us to the next agenda item, the agenda item of the UPSA bond refunding.
Maybe Dr. Geer's will try and pull that to get to this part of the question. Any questions? I was alerted a few weeks ago by the Virginia Public School Authority that they were considering refunding its 2010 issue C bonds and 2012 A bonds, neither of which we originally got. We got 2004 bonds. And refunding basically means the refinancing that debt. And so we have the 2004 bond that was refunded later and became the 2012 bond. So I guess it was refunded in 2012. There's a memo or a certificate that needs to be issued by the county to the PSA that recognizes that we agreed to this refunding. We stand to save a little over $20,000 over the remaining two years that we owe on this bond. And the downside is that we couldn't refund it again for 10 years. Well, we're only have two years of payments, and I just can't imagine possibly refunding. The 10-year window isn't going to affect us too much. We don't have the power to refund it ourselves. The county, the school. So to me, it makes a lot of sense to go along with this and say, thank you. We'll take our $20,000 over the next two years. But I would like the chair to sign this form.
I would be more than willing to sign this form, and I would make a motion to that effect. Any other specifics? Director Pedron, second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That takes us to the board committee reports. Building Committee is first on the list.
I have a chair. I have to report that we haven't had again this much. But there's just so much on our plate now with Mr. Curry going on vacation. I'm going to blame it on him.
I'll take it.
And anyway, I think October looks like it'd be a much better time for us to be getting together with both the Building Committee and Rules Committee.
Okay, very good. Thank you. For our committee, we've already had a report. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Monahan?
No, thank you for your support.
Okay, thank you. RCRFA?
Very active, hardcore, dark skies continues to be an issue. I just want to mention it just because it's become an enforcement issue. Mr. Van Acker went to the dark skies certification body, I think I mentioned previously, and dialed back the public access nights just to Friday and Saturday night. If you looked at the night sky recently with Mars right near the moon at the time of moonrise, there was a lot of activity this past week. On Saturday evening, I heard from my constituents who live adjacent to the park that there were at least five vehicles in the park. That would be fine, except that no one had applied for authorized use of the park on Saturday night. So what happens in a situation like that is I end up contacting dispatch, and a deputy one available will go over there and flush people out. So no. one available will go over there and flush people out. So no action yet, but clearly it's still not quite working. We had hoped to dial back that open public access just to two nights a week so that it could be more controllable, so that if there are people in the park on any other night, it would be clear they shouldn't be there. Problem is the nights when people are allowed to be there, people are showing up regardless of whether or not they have permission. And clearly, to put up a gate or some other mechanism is really an unwieldy solution, given limited staff and the fact that we can't ask volunteers to be out there every day opening, closing a gate. So I just raise this as an ongoing problem. And I think signage is probably the place to start. Clear signage that says, unless you have permission, you can't be in the park at night, something like that. So just wanted to bring it up because I feel like I'm here from neighbors, you know, not every week, but pretty close. And I don't mind talking to the sheriff, and I appreciate their support in this regard, but I also don't think it's a good use of our deputies' time. I wish they didn't have to go do that at all. So just wanted you to be aware of it.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Rules Committee, you already covered Mr. Frazier. Public Safety Committee, we have a meeting scheduled for October 27th, due this month. Any question update, Mr. Frazier? Is there anything to add? Or we'll probably get to that this evening?
Yes.
Fire Levy Board?
Thank you. We had a really good meeting and people are engaged in a way to really try and help with this. Do we need paid staff? Do we need paid staff? And we've gotten from the association, from the chiefs, everybody says, yes, we need some help. So the committee or the Fire Levy Board made a motion to help Mr. Curry with finding Mr. Williams' replacement. And we have a couple of people working on job description, do these qualifications just to help Mr. Curry in that documentation process and make sure that the person that we do hire is somebody that's going to work together with our chiefs. They also made a motion to determine from each company who needs immediate help and what that help is. And so we sent out, I sent out a survey the other day to all the chiefs requesting for feedback by October 9th, listing how many people they currently have running calls, how many people they have on their roster, basically, to try to determine where we have maybe a lot of people on the roster that aren't running calls. We can try to find out why that is happening, as well as how many people, which day of the week do they think they need help, like one EMT or one ALS. And then if there's particular times of the day, because most of our volunteers work during the day, so I'm expecting we'll see day hours are more important to the companies than their evening hours. But some need both. And then we'll take that information back. The chiefs are going, or not the chiefs, the Fire Levy Board is going to meet either on the 14th or the 15th, I should know, hopefully by tomorrow, so that we can get that posted correctly, the location and the date and time. But they're definitely engaged, energetic, and want to help. So it was a good meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Any other meetings that we can talk about or introduce to others?
I'll just mention, since it's not often discussed, Mr. Parrish was kind enough to love to take the lead of the Rappahannock River Basin Commission. We were supposed to have had a meeting in person, actually, it occurs about a lot, I guess, last week or the week before. Unfortunately, it had to be canceled for COVID-19 related reason. But I just, I want to express my appreciation, appreciation to all of you for allowing me to sit on that commission because it's really important stuff. I will mention that we have a new fish biologist, ultimately a fish biologist in the Shandone National Park who happens to be my neighbor. And so one of, one of the things I'm going to try to do is get him involved in the commission to some extent because he's got incredible freshwater fisheries expertise and stream expertise and his expressed interest. So I'll be talking with the administrator of the commission and try to get him involved if nothing else, just to maybe give a presentation. So really fascinating stuff and it's really interesting to hear these regional issues that are very important to us and places that waters the Rappahannock River.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Anything else to report? Very good. That takes us to the treasure support. Mr. Curry, they should all be in the packet, correct?
I'm all in the packet. I just put this, the graph, cash graph on the screen. Just encourage you all to look at that.
Or just like a big, oh.
Yeah, Mr. Curry, I was, I was just using the graph and maybe it's, the graph just is imprecise, but if you back, if you look at our cash position compared to last year, they deduct the $1.2 million in CARES Act money. It looks like the spread is still, we're still up 1.4. Does that sound about right?
Yes. And so if you were to look at the revenue reports, that's a function of the accelerated pace of tax revenue collection and whatever fund balance, whatever you added to fund balance after, you know, all last year. But yeah, that, the fact that that line is pointing up rather than dipping into the bowl is CARES and accelerated collections, which is really important. Cash flow is really important. You can get down to it. So if we can keep that going year after year, it helps us more predictably invest the tax dollars rather than having to sit in the bank to absorb a problem. And you can, you can put more of those dollars to work.
Sales tax revenue remains strong, is that right?
Sales tax revenue remains very strong. We'll learn about hills and lodging tax in next month. We should have a good first peek into that.
Is the sales tax revenue, is also online shopping?
That's correct.
So would this mean that in December, we won't see the big spike that will be more of?
So at some point in time, if we, if all things were equal and we just had $1.2 million of CARES money, and we didn't spend any of it, which we know is without, you know, something we're allowed to do, if, if December at that peak, we should be $1.2 million higher. So this line, they should intersect over time. We're not going to get necessarily more revenue. We're just going to get it earlier.
Yep.
And then we'll start dropping off over time as we no longer receive revenue. We may get to the peak sooner.
And I just wanted to reiterate, not just earlier payments, it's earlier billing.
Yes.
We should very much thank our constitutional officers for being so astute and such good stewardship.
Yeah. I, I lay, you know, I asked them if they could do it and they said absolutely and they did it.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Curry.
All right. So that's review of legal matters attached. And we've already reviewed some of that. Update on family administrator activities.
I provided a memo for you that you can review if you're convenient. I'm happy to answer questions. Still work to be done this afternoon and you have a closed meeting and a long meeting tonight.
Very good. Building permit report, zoning administrator report, and the V.D.O. monthly report are also attached in the packets. Is that sufficient to say or does anyone have any questions? That takes us to a manager presented by the board. Does anybody have anything that they need to talk about?
Just what I touched on earlier, I really think that the board needs to be a little proactive in how we attend meetings. And I think we need to put the word out to the fire association that, well, you know, indicators, they are a public agency and they need to be advertising their meetings.
I understand that they post them on the website, but I've never checked.
Yeah.
Certainly not their own full office.
I think we just need to make sure that that's happening somehow. And we're, we're giving them the money, so we're ultimately responsible.
Principally funded is the thing to term and they certainly meet that test.
Yeah.
I think, I mean, Ms. Smith pointed out earlier that we have, we have so many key initiatives ongoing right now. And I agree with Ms. Stein. I want to learn as much as possible, attend as much as possible. And I feel like I owe that to my constituents. So I don't know how we remove any uncertainty from this, I guess, what's ultimately a FOIA question. I mean, I want to, I want to be out there to the extent time allows. Obviously, I don't want to run afoul of, it's out of my intention, of course, to run afoul of FOIA limitations in attending meetings. So I guess, Mr. Curry, what's, can we get an answer on that?
Well, the, the answer was provided and, and if you haven't seen it, I can certainly provide it to you.
I saw it. I mean, that is the answer?
That is the, the only answer you're getting. If you can get, the county attorney could issue an opinion on the matter and that opinion, you know, could then be run to the attorney general. I don't think it's, I don't think the issue is that cloudy. I feel very comfortable that if you're not transacting public business and you're a wallflower, it's not a public meeting.
Okay.
Now, doesn't mean you can't tell the world you're going to be there. But my problem with that is if you notice it as a meeting and as a citizen, I don't want to pay attention because you can do something. If you don't notice it as a meeting, you can't take any action. And that gives me comfort. I don't have to go and watch and make sure I know what action you're doing because you can't take action. But you have to remember, you cannot participate. You cannot transact that public good.
It's very much so.
It is. And so it's there to protect the citizens. And, and if you intend and want to take action on a matter that the chiefs are talking about and convening a meeting at the same time as they do in the same place, that may make sense. But if you're only there to inform yourselves and not participate in their deliberations, then that's okay too.
At the chief's meeting, we participated. Two of us participated with four of us sitting there at a table.
Well, and probably sitting at the table is not the best plan.
That's what I'm trying to say. We've, we've got to work this out previous to the meeting.
Sitting off with the rest of the public, if there was an area where the public is, that would make it clearer to those in attendance that there is no majority participating or transacting public goods.
So if we're not a part of the agenda, if there's nothing like Fire Levy Board can give an update to the association or something like that, if we're not part of their agenda, just sit up against the wall?
Now, but if you are part of their agenda, reported to Fire Levy Board, then the chair should deliver the message of the, of the body. That has a singular report. This is a report of the body. That chair singularly can't take action.
I mean, unless someone tells me otherwise, to the extent I can attend meetings and sit in the background and say nothing, I will.
Because I'm concerned. So, and Alan Gernhardt has said, it is as much perception as it is the law. So you, even though you're sitting around all together and you're intermixed and you're not participating, there is a perception that you're participating. So don't intermix. And, you know, be on the wall and be completely separate and probably not near your peers, right? If there's four people there, you're completely in different areas. You're not talking to one, one, and you're definitely not all talking, or a majority of them.
Part, part was during, during, I was going to say the height of the COVID epidemic, but a lot of these meetings were being filmed and were online or Zoom meetings or whatever. You drop in and watch them. It's, that's changed a little bit, you know? You get, a lot of these you have to go to and cruise them, so.
None of that doesn't mean that somebody couldn't file a lawsuit and claim that you've done something wrong and then, you know, go through that process.
Well, I just remember.
You can't protect against that.
A situation where Ms. Smith and myself and two members of the Park Correct Authority, we met, neither, neither body constituted a quorum, and yet the local newspaper accuses of sliding under FOIA on the front page.
And you know that's perfectly legal and probably a good idea. Try, having interactions so you can make informed decisions is a good thing.
Yeah.
But the perception, the connotations.
But to be impugn, publicly impugn for trying to do a reasonable service to the community was beyond pale.
I mean, it's true. That would be a very unfortunate headline. And I mean, FOIA, the bottom line is compliance or non-compliance. So, you know, it was, it was very unfortunate and I think a real misuse of, of words in that headline.
It was an abuse.
It was abuse. So I think it's a good thing now that we're getting back to more in-person meetings and we do have so many irons in the fire, to just keep this in the forefront of our minds when we attend meetings. I kind of think if you're not appointed to that committee, you, as a deference, if there's additional committee members or supervisors members there, if there's more than two of us there, probably only one would, when it should speak. Just out of deference, so there's no, no jockey for who can and can't say things. And that doesn't need to be a hard and fast rule. But it is awkward sometimes if you're in a meeting and, and someone's the appointee and then someone else asks a question. And you'd really like to ask a question too, but you can't. So the more we hold that in forefront of our minds going forward, I think the more it will benefit us all. And, and hopefully other public lines as well. I guess we need to do a FOIA training next year? We got to skip a year this year?
Um, no. The, the law became effective on, the time period became effective on July 1 of 2020. And so then we're supposed to do it before December.
Okay.
Mr. Gernhardt has not did a roadshow, but said he could provide for somebody to do it electronically. So we could talk about the best way to do that, fully recognize the conversation. It was just that.
Yeah, that would be good. We probably should get into that. It's by end of December.
Yep.
Very good. And thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Frazier.
No, no, I just, I mean, I think the public's learning that they don't send emails, so they're calling a lot more than they should.
Well, I mean, my, my, my items to bring forward are sort of mundane in comparison. One of them we should have probably touched on, the CARES Act funding. But I'm hearing from people that they really want the, the Porta-Johns pulled. And I noticed signs of fate, so they're not really marked very well anymore. And I'd always understood that when the last leaf fell, they would, they would be out the door as well. Is, is that still planned?
That's my plan.
Okay.
Through this brush, if we have a rush, and then get it going.
Okay. And then my other, I am sort of dovetails that, which is that we have a new superintendent coming into the park this month, is my understanding. And I'd like to reestablish that relationship. I reached out to some of the folks that I reached out previously regarding a lot of folks parking, people in the little double staircase in the old school locations. So I think we need to refocus that again. It was, it was a very odd thing and I would never have thought, but when there was the airplane crash at the Buck Hollow area, it forced a lot of hikers into alternate locations. And I had a few Buck Holes that, you know, they were really overflowing that weekend.
It's exactly what happened with COVID. It's like you, yeah, came a whack.
I mean, for, for one, for one or two weekends with the, with the airplane crash. And so I, I think that, I mean, articles that I read say that park use is up about 30%. And those are not statistics, any numbers, but it seems to be a trend everywhere. And I just, I just would like to reach out to the park, maybe proactively and ask them to monitor the parking areas in county over the next season. And also to reestablish, you know, our communications with the park as soon as possible with the new superintendent.
And Deputy Superintendent Sobia is still there. He's just returned to his deputy role. So he's still a very good point of communication for us as the new superintendent out there. And we can get a meeting set up. We're, I assume that it was a roadshow, but I can reach out to him and ask him what, what they can do about our boundary, trail of his park.
Yeah, if they can just keep an eye on them. I'm hearing in particular about the two I mentioned, but I'm short, you know, usages, that's Oliver. So what do you think they can do to monitor that with the anticipation of the new superintendent writing would be very much appreciated. And those are the items that I have for you.
If I may, just the matter that I brought up to the paper the other day. Normally, I think a health insurance company wants to bring alarm to the members and say, hey, you're about to lose your Valley Health or whatever. And ultimately, you end up keeping your insurance company and your, your doctors. But I do believe there is a bit more of an opportunity that Valley Health and Anthem may actually split their relationship. And I brought it to the attention of Mr. Curry because I know Warren County uses them as well and they're concerned. I know there's a lot of people in Rappahannock County that uses Anthem and Valley Health, Dr. Miller and Ann Miller. that uses Anthem and Valley Health, Dr. Miller and Ann Miller. So I just want to make sure the citizens of anybody watching at the moment that has Anthem and does go to Valley Health for healthcare, you may want to make some phone calls.
They probably all received a letter like our employees did. The localities in the valley are very, very worried about this because of the concentration providers there. We, of course, have a little bit better selection with access to warrant and call ever. And many of them are sending letters to Anthem saying they're giving guns if they're going to drop out of Anthem, but maybe send it later. That's a dangerous game. And so there's no guarantee that we will be able to find a provider particularly with such a small pool that we have on the market that we can offer what Anthem will look choice of us. So we're in a tough spot.
Could we write a friendly letter? I mean, that, you know, being a small, rural locality, we're challenged with healthcare options and we really appreciate the availability of Anthem Blue Cross to Blue Shield to cover, you know, the options that we do have and.
I can't imagine.
I would think of maybe, I mean, angry phone calls from people that have the insurance. But a friendly letter from the locality might be a little more effective. I don't want to paint us into a corner, right?
It sounds like you already wrote it, so it's good.
Just trying to make Gary's job easy sometimes.
Would you like to write others?
I wrote aye.
Would it be to Ann and Bill, tell them?
Yeah, I would say if you could bear it, that would be great, and Valley Health know what we're doing. Letting them know that we are really, you know, trying to watch out for our constituents and their being. And I'll stop by and find it tomorrow morning, Gary. I appreciate it very much. Thank you so much. I know it'll take a day or so to pull it together. All right, that takes us to the next item on the agenda. If no one has anything else to present, the closed meeting for the county attorney's performance evaluation.
There's a motion in the packet if the board wants to.
I move that the Rapidhead County Board Supervisor conduct a closed meeting in accordance with 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of discussion and consideration of the performance of the specific employees of any public body, 2.2-3711A1. The subject matter of the closed meeting will be, number one, the performance evaluation of the county attorney. I think it has been our tradition to ask the county administrator to stay for the evaluation of the county attorney. And so I'm going to include that in the motion as well. And I've asked for a second.
Hold on a second.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Thank you.